Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Town Council Workshop of November 29th, 2023. If you could please all rise with me and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our workshop. Let me just give you kind of a little bit of a timeline of where we've been and where we are. And but honestly, where we're going, we don't know yet, and that's what we're going to try to figure out. So as you are aware, the Homeless Trust has proposed an initiative to purchase the La Quinta Hotel over here on Caribbean Boulevard and use it for their needs for providing shelter for homeless. And it is in the county budget, and this is this is not something that the town of Cutler Bay gets to vote on. This is something that is going to be voted on by the Board of County Commissioners. When this was first brought to my attention, it was probably in early July, I think, where they reached out to Ralph and said, hey, we're thinking about this. From our perspective, we thought, great, you can think about it, but it doesn't meet the minimum requirements. And so they won't be able to go forward and didn't give it much more thought. They reached out again a couple of times after that. At one point, I do know that we did send them some requirements, instructions on how to obtain a variance if they wanted to do that going forward, again, with no input from the council. None of the council actually discussed anything with the Homeless Trust. From their perspective, I think they they believe they reached out to our staff. And again, that's where we really, I guess, come to brass tacks is who is enough of of communication between what the county would like to do, what the Homeless Trust would like to do, what the town of Cutler Bay would like to do. And I don't want to spend a lot of time tonight talking about the he said or she said of whether there was enough communication. From my perspective, there was not. From their perspective, it was. And we can leave it at that and move on because that's really what we need to do. We also need to remember that the the Homeless Trust are not the enemy of the people, okay? The Homeless Trust provides a very, very needed service. Homelessness is a problem throughout throughout the country. And some areas much worse than we have it here in Dade County. But, you know, we are all facing a crisis of a housing crisis. We all know that housing prices are skyrocketing, rent prices are skyrocketing, insurance prices are skyrocketing. And it's making it very, very difficult for people to find places to live. Here in Cutler Bay, we are constantly battling of people putting campers in our backyards and adding additional efficiencies and those types of things to find places for people to live. And, you know, we want to try to balance the needs of as many people as possible, but also make sure that we preserve our community, what it is, a family-friendly community, which will serve the needs of everybody, from the doctor to the blue-collar worker. And we do the best that we can to do that. Tonight, the format is going to be very simple. Let me continue a little bit more on the timeline. When we found out about what the plans were, that there were actually, there was a lot of intent to purchase the La Quinta, then we realized, oh, okay. This is something we need to definitely pay attention to. We reached out to our county commissioner and discussed the issue with her. And Danielle Cohen-Higgins has stood up for us. And she she had asked the Board of County Commissioners to give 60 days to find an additional site. There are no guarantees in that, just to kind of slow it down a little bit, let's take a look. Let's see if this is in the best interest of everybody. And as you'll hear later on, when I present why I don't think it's the best interest for Cutler Bay, I'll explain those reasons in detail, but I do want to thank Danielle Cohen-Higgins for stepping forward and giving us the opportunity to do just this, to have an open line of communication and realize that, again, you know, let the Homeless Trust present what their ideas are to help the homeless, okay? They're not out to hurt Cutler Bay. They're here to help the, they want to help the homeless. We have a different idea of how we think we should help the the people that need housing, but we'll address that. I also wanted to say thank you to Mayor Kava for suggesting that we get together in this forum where the Homeless Trust can present what they want to the citizens of Cutler Bay and the council. So you have what their intent is. And we're also going to present what we think is best for Cutler Bay. So to make sure that the Homeless Trust understands what our goals are and what our vision for Cutler Bay is. After that, time permitting, I will allow comments from the public, depending on how many people want to speak. And we'll we'll see if we can get through that as well. But we really want to focus on a solution more than anything else. And I have to assure you that the Town Council has been working with Ralph and our attorneys, trying to find every way possible to look for every opportunity to do what we think is best for our citizens. We've all been very, very involved. We've been in meetings with many commissioners, with the mayor, anybody we can to go ahead and try to see what we can do to to help make Cutler Bay the best city it can be. But with that being said, I'm going to allow the Homeless Trust to introduce themselves and give us their presentation. I'm going to ask that we treat them in Cutler Bay with respect. Again, I want you to focus on what their goal is, is to provide shelter for homeless people. And they are not the enemy. We will not tolerate any personal attacks, okay? That's not what this is about. This is really about finding solutions. So can you all just kind of nod your heads and be in agreement with you on that and being respectful? And especially everywhere between Thanksgiving, well, we got to be thankful, and Christmas and the holiday celebration time, so love should be in the air. Let's make sure that it's in the air of Cutler Bay tonight. With that, I'm going to go ahead and introduce the Homeless Trust and Ron Book, sir, the floor is yours.
Thank you, council members. For the record, Ron Book, 11th Street, Riley, the charity office, the line for charity service, the chairman of the board. I want to, Mayor, council members, and I want to turn around and apologize in the spirit of the venue. I want to apologize to the citizens for having my back to them.
Okay, I want to apologize to the citizens for having my back to them. But I'm talking to you as much as I'm talking to the council. And for any slights that members of the community may think we made, I assure you, all of you as citizens and folks that live in Cutler Bay and surrounding areas, I apologize to you if you believe I slighted you. It was not with any level of intention. Mayor, to you and the council members, I likewise apologize because I don't want anybody to think that we in some way, shape, or form intended to hide from the discussion, hide from the transaction, or not share. We did communicate with the manager. We did communicate with the staff. Did we think that was sufficient? We did. If we were wrong, we accept responsibility for that. So Mayor, with your words, that is in our rearview mirror. I accept responsibility. I chair this board. I have 26 other members on our board from throughout this community. We operate as a public-private partnership. I want to take just a couple of minutes and walk the community as much through what we are as a body as anything else. Thirty-three years ago, there was a governor's commission on homelessness appointed that were three co-chairs. Alva Chapman, the former editor and publisher of the Miami Herald, former chairman of the Knight Ritter Corporation, a guy by the name of Jeb Bush, who at that time had just recently lost his election to Governor Charles, and Alex Pinellas, who was assigned the issue of homelessness by Commissioner Teal, who at that time was chairman of the board, thinking that he was going to run against Alex. He would sentence Alex to purgatory by giving him homelessness. Alex made a way of turning homelessness into a very popular issue in our community as we started our fight from that report, which became the 10-year plan to end homelessness. It later became the amended 10-year plan to end homelessness. It became the community plan to end homelessness, and now it is priority home. We are a board of 27 people that make up the policy that we have to end homelessness in the community. We run a budget of about $103 million. The food and beverage tax raises approximately $47 million a year now for the trust and another 15 million for the Domestic Violence Oversight Board. That comes, that's derived from the one penny food and beverage tax that is charged in every restaurant in the community other than Miami Beach Surfside and Bell Harbor. That will soon change in November of '24. Restaurants pay that. Our funding comes with our partnership from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, which is six times named the Miami-Dade County Homeless Trust as the best practice model in America. It doesn't mean we have every answer. It doesn't mean we know everything. We search the country for other practices as we move through things. But what we are is a continuum of care. We are a funder to other entities. We buy beds. We buy units. We buy services throughout the community, the Salvation Army, the Rescue Mission, Lotus House, Camilla's House, New Hope, our partners in our fight and homelessness. We have 120, 130 contracts with providers throughout the community. In the early years, we weren't sure we were sending people to the right places as we were pulling them off the streets. The fact of the matter is, we are looked at as the model for America. Four years ago, we realized that if we didn't get control of our housing problem, not our shelters, and let me be clear, let me be clear to each of you, as I said to the mayor and a couple of your colleagues that joined us with the manager at the Chairman's Policy Council meeting at Miami-Dade 10 days ago. At the end of the day, this is never going to be a shelter. It is not a shelter, period. We have been extraordinarily clear. It is not a shelter. It will never be a shelter. We will covenant that it will not be a shelter, and we are not going to ever have a needle exchange. We are good citizens in the community. This is to be an apartment building, and we need to break the narrative of it being a shelter because it's not. The residents of this building will have leases. They will all pay rent. I know that you all, Mayor, you said it. There is a lack of availability of housing, and there is a lack of affordability. And we have citizens, every homeless person is not the wino that so stereotypically gets referred to. There are people in our community that are situationally and episodically homeless. They're not chronic. Chronic is that individual that's 365 or more days out of a year on the streets or having had four incidences homelessness in a two-year period, four incidences homelessness in a two-year period. We started, those of you who are lifelong or longtime residents of this community, when we started, we had 8,000 unsheltered individuals. Tonight, we all go home. There'll still be 980 too many unsheltered individuals on our streets. I've got 2,400 people in our various shelters waiting for housing. They have housing plans. They have funds to pay rent. And I repeat, everybody that would live here will have a lease, will pay rent, and will abide by the rules or they will be evicted. In the audience are a number of people from one of our acquisitions. We bought an adult living facility in North Miami. Why did we buy it in North Miami? We bought it in North Miami because it was an available multifamily repurposed opportunity to create units of housing for senior citizens. There are a bunch of them here, a bunch of them here because we wanted the folks in Cutler Bay, not just you, but the citizens here, to see that they are people just like them that have fallen on hard times. The bulk of the people at Mia Casa in North Miami aren't just above the age of 55, but they're above the age of 70. We've got 92-year-olds, 94-year-olds, 83-year-olds. I met a couple, Mayor, the younger woman that came to the microphone at the Chairman's Policy Council meeting, didn't tell her full story. She met a man that was also in the audience. They're in their 70s. They were boyfriend and girlfriend way back in the day, like 50, 60 years ago. They ended up both living at Mia Casa and realizing they were former boyfriend and girlfriend and have rebuilt their relationship and are on the verge of getting married. That's what happens in apartment-style living, and that's what this will be. What we realized four years ago is that we needed to buy and repurpose buildings that we could find, that were ready to go, that were compatible in a community. I can tell you, you'll hear tonight, if given the opportunity, somebody's going to read a letter from the city of North Miami. It's going to tell you that the 120 residents at Mia Casa have been an upgrade in the community, that the building has been upgraded, that the have a peep about them. On any given night in this community, we have 5,000 individuals living in rental housing. You never read about it in the newspaper because they're good tenants. For 20-plus years, we've got a line item in our budget, landlord mitigation fund. In 20-plus years, and you're welcome to look at our budget, it's posted. Not one penny has ever been paid out to a landlord for damaged units of housing that we rent. At the end of the day, this property is zoned right. It's compatible with everything in your code. I got that the unit size is smaller. They're micro units. Every unit will be retrofitted with a kitchenette so that people can cook their meals and live there. These will be single occupancy or dual, where there is a couple. You're not going to have 20 people living in a unit. That's not what we do. That's not who we are. We were asked the other day, and I want to thank both Mayor Kava and Commissioner Cohen-Higgins for the continued dialogue. We were asked yesterday by Commissioner Cohen-Higgins about, did we just zero in on this site? I want you all to understand that I have two pages of sites we went and looked at to buy, not just this one. We focused on trying to spread out geographically where we were going to buy these buildings and make them not just available to us for our population, but where geographically, and I want to stop and pause, Mayor, council members that were with us last week, week before. I can't put more facilities in downtown Miami. I can't put more in the city. We've crammed into the city of Miami Camilla's, Miami Rescue Mission, the Salvation Army, Lotus House. Camilla's has multiple entities, New Hope, Citrus, Better Way, all located in the geographic boundaries of the city of Miami. Does the city of Miami have a larger homeless population than other parts of our community? They do. We try to be fair in where we contract for our units of housing and where we have sought properties to purchase. So I've told you about Mia Casa in North Miami off of Chrome and 12th. Geographically, for our folks that are as geographically impaired as I am, as a crow flies 45 degrees from the Mikasuki Casino, east-southeast of the casino. We've paid four and a half million dollars to buy out a deed restriction. We are creating 190 units, single-family occupancy, all males. Why? We know we have a larger male population, and we believe that was a better site for us geographically and for dispersing folks into the community where there was transit and job opportunities. And I know that I've read a bunch of questions about whether or not everybody in this apartment building will work. Some will, some won't. Some will be that 70- or 80-year-old grandmother or grandfather. They may not be working, but they will have the financial resources to meet their rental obligations. I, that's correct, social security, disability income, and the like. Every tenant that we place, wherever we place them in this community, we look at their background, we look at their financial resources, we look at their ability to pay, period, end of story. I know that after 33 years of leading this body, we are moving to a better place. We have a plan to end it. And Vicki sometimes picks at me when I use this statistic, but for those, again, long-term residents of this community. When we started 33 years ago, Seattle, San Francisco, Los Angeles, Denver, Houston, Dallas, New Orleans, Atlanta, Chicago, Detroit, Pittsburgh, Philadelphia, Boston, New York City, and Washington DC, and Miami-Dade County had one thing in common. We all had between 8,000 and 11,000 unsheltered people. The reason we're down to 980, and there are 79,000 unsheltered in Los Angeles, I can tell you because I went and witnessed it at Alberto Carvalho's request. We went out there to see what we could do to help them a month and a half ago. I was taken by what I already knew when I saw it visually. If we don't solve our affordable housing crisis for the population, we try to make sure do not overload our streets. We are going to go backwards. I promise you that. The referendum in November of '24 on Miami Beach Surfside and Bell Harbor to expand our revenue stream is to assure that in perpetuity we are going to be able to provide the services that ready people for self-sustaining living where we all live. And Mayor, you're right. Christmas, Thanksgiving, holidays. I could spend a lot of time going through our slides about the affordable housing solutions, but I think we all know what they are. If we don't control how many units we have, our shelters will remain full. We will move nobody into housing, and HUD will stop funding the 40, almost $50 million a year they give us and the special grant awards they give us to make sure that we don't have children on the streets. The 21 million that the Bezos Foundation gave to Chapman Partnership, our private sector partner, formerly known as Community Partnership on Homelessness, is to focus on the end. The last 20 some odd million we got from HUD several months back is to focus on the end, to get the balance of our population housed. A number of years back, HUD punished us. They took away $6 million of our money. And they took away $6 million because they didn't believe we were moving fast enough to create housing opportunities. They wanted us, and they wanted to send us a message, and they did. Did Congressman Diaz-Balart help us recover some of that money? Yeah, he sure did. Vicki, can we move to the slides just to show some folks what Mia Casa looked like before and after? Just want folks in the audience mostly to see what we've done and understand that we want to be part of the community and we want our population to be part of the community. I want to ask if I can, folks that are here from Mia Casa, would you stand? They look just like the rest of our community because they are. They don't look like the people that I've been reading on social media, something we're bringing to hideaways by the bay. And let me say one thing about the name of the apartment complex that we want to establish at the La Quinta. If the name doesn't work for the city of Cutler Bay, Mr. Manager, Mayor, council members, we'll change it. We'll change it. We're not married to a name. If it's not compatible with the new large mall development, we want to be good friends. We got a letter, as most of you know, I think, from Keith Polikoff, who represents Southland. Afternoon, we responded to it this morning. We made clear that we wanted to be friendly. You know, we've been working on these solutions for a couple of years. And yes, it was late spring and early summer when we communicated with the manager. But I want to, again, reiterate to the community. Cutler Bay Town Center, Town Center District, a broad array of uses is expected in a pattern which integrates shops, restaurants, services, workplaces, civic, educational, and public assembly uses, and higher-density housing in a compact, pedestrian-oriented environment. Mixed-use, commercial and retail, multifamily within a mixed-use development, civic, office, bar, nightclub, medical marijuana dispensary, pharmacy, restaurant, recreational facilities, place of public assembly, park, professional services. Hideaways is part of that Town Center District, which specifically allows multifamily with mixed use. This is not a special use outside of the town's approved uses. And I simply read that into the record because of what we see as the housing compatibility in turning this hotel that has no restrictions on background checks, no restrictions on security, no restrictions on anything that we are prepared to provide. And we are certainly prepared to have a capital fund to make certain that we're not hitting our residents with special assessments, that in the long term, we will be able to maintain and upkeep the property. When renovations need to be made, they will be made. We will be good and compliant under your code, and you won't hear about our residents. I remind you of what you don't need to be reminded of, but the rapid transit zone creates opportunities to allow our residents of that apartment building to get to the places they need to go, whether those are medical appointments, whether those are family appointments, whether those are jobs that they will largely have. I will conclude my remarks simply by saying the following. We didn't target Cutler Bay. We found this opportunity with a willing seller. We've looked and scoured the community. We've negotiated with a couple of other places as well that we intend to acquire. The Board of County Commissioners two years ago validated and affirmed our commitment to acquire buildings and to repurpose them for permanent supportive housing when they awarded us the first 25 million. The city of Miami gave us an additional 15 million. The city of Miami Beach is finalizing, giving us 2 million. We picked up a bundle from the city of North Miami Beach. We've raised private funds as well through the Miami Foundation, all in an effort as a community, as a village. And we've posted some of the money up there on the screen. But as a community, we're where we are because everybody that lives in the village of Miami-Dade County, the 3 million people that live here, have helped us row the boat in the same direction, have helped support what we do. And so that there's also no question about whether we've got other housing. We built 140-unit townhouse development down in Homestead. We built a micro enterprise, a 22-acre farm and a farmer's market down there. We built a micro enterprise, a twenty-two-acre farm and a farmer's market down there. All words, making sure that when people talk about the community we live in, and you know, people tell us all the time, we do things wrong in Miami Dade County. And as I told at noon today, that was held at Jungle Island, the one thing we do better than any place in America, anywhere in America, is we do homelessness right. We take care of those people that are so often referred to as the least, the lost, the last, and the forgotten. And acquiring this property and turning it into a compatible apartment building that you will be proud of is the commitment I made to you tonight. Mayor, Mr. Manager, thank you for the time earlier today. Thank you for the diligence and allowing me to speak and to share the thoughts. I'm happy to take any and all questions from you and any questions that the community has, and I'll do it however you deem it best appropriate. Vicki, did I leave anything out that you feel we should add? Thank you. And I'm joined by a number of people from the Homeless Trust staff. Ms. Drenbrowne is here, Ms. Mallett is here. We have folks from Mayor's team here. I saw Javay over here from Commissioner Cohen Higgins' office. Who else is here from the trust staff that I missed? Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. You don't mind if I call you Ron on this?
I am Ron. I don't know who Mr. is, and I don't know who Ronald is.
I'm going to just real quick, again, I understand what the Homeless Trust is trying to accomplish, and I do want to commend some of the work that they've done with Micaa and other areas. But I also, I think it's important that when you're doing a site selection, you consider the other alternatives. So I'm just going to go through just a brief history of what this site was about. And then I'm going to go ahead and give myself the opportunity to ask you and the rest of the council to ask you questions as well. So if you could go ahead and bring up our slideshow, Marissa, I would appreciate it. And again, you can't help but, you know, Cutler Bay for many, many, many years was considered, you know, the stepchild of the county, often ignored. We're glad that they put a dump in our beautiful area. We're lucky for that. And I'm not equating this to dumping in any way at all. So, Marissa, if you could go forward just a couple for me, please. Go forward until, I'm going to start talking about this area. So a little bit more, please. All right. So the downtown Cutler's area, let's go back to two thousand and five. This is prior to when the town of Cutler Bay became incorporated. The county was looking for a way to make Cutler Bay a little bit more than what it was because basically what it was, was a blue-collar housing community. We didn't have any jobs down here. We didn't have a lot of opportunities down here. And we got together with our citizens, and there's many of them in the room today that put their thoughts and ideas forward to talk about what vision they had for Cutler Bay in the South Dade area. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Which one, up or down, or right or left? Right, okay. Okay. Again, like I said, a lot of community involvement about what we wanted. People plotted it out. The vision for this area, the vision was the area is to create a mixed-use, walkable, livable community, but more importantly, it also to bring jobs down here as well. Medical facilities, attorneys, anything that we could to get the people out of the traffic going north and spending an hour and a half every day. So the Southland Mall, the Cutler's Mall at the time, was identified as a great area. And it was basically rezoned. And the council back at that time said, we can do something with this. We had to clear a vision. We rezoned it and began on our, I'm going to go through these really quickly because I don't need to speak to all of them and kind of tell you the story in my own words. So we worked hard for fifteen years trying to find somebody that would come and take what was an underperforming mall and do something that not just going to help Cutler Bay, but to help all the South Dade area, to bring the housing that we need. You talked about the housing shortage, and the only thing that's going to affect the rent prices is the supply. There are studies in Iowa that show for every thousand units that they build, the average rent goes down six percent. And so this redevelopment in this area, it's going to bring, you know, five thousand units. So we should see reductions in rents as all these units are built. And this is, when we're talking about the La Quinta area right there, you can't look at what it is now. You really have to look at what it could be because that's what we did in two thousand and five or two thousand and three, looking at what this area could be. So La Quinta right now is a, you know, three or four-story building, units, but we had a very similar parcel property nearby where they're building this right here in front of us, okay? You could have an eight structure building there. And that does much more to alleviate the supply of housing. Cutler Bay has asked all the builders to come in the area to reserve some housing for workforce housing, including first responders, teachers, and military. We think it's very important that we keep that in mind. But the bottom line is supply is the most important thing that's going to help our housing's supply shortage. We can help a hundred and four, a hundred and twelve, two hundred and forty, or we can try to help as many as possible. We can try to help six thousand, seven thousand. And that's what the vision is, and anything that goes in this area needs to be compatible with that. It's, I'm glad to see that the housing that you're proposing today with the covenants is something much more in line with that vision without the needle exchange. And, you know, you mentioned the wino on the streets or, you know, what we're talking about, the chronically homeless, because it's really not a homeless issue with them. It's either a mental health issue or a drug issue. And we know that these type of citizens need to be served, but where they need to be served is the real question. And so we want to make sure that we take these next sixty days to look at all the sites that you've put into consideration and balance that against what the greater needs are for housing for all of South Dade County and really doing everything we can to support the vision of Cutler Bay, not just bring housing, but the jobs. So people don't have to go north anymore to create a new economic hub here in the south end of the county to improve all the lives of all of us, not only the fifty thousand people that we have in Cutler Bay, but the twenty-five thousand Palmetto Bay and all the thousands that are living around the Cutler Bay area as well. So, you know, I didn't want this to be a combative issue of, you know, well, we got to do it wireway and you have to do it your way. What we really wanted is to make sure that we had an open line of communication that everybody would understand what the needs in Cutler Bay were. Now, us as a council, we don't get a chance to vote on this. So alls we can do is work with our citizens to make sure that our voices is heard as much as possible, to work with our commissioners and the mayor of Dade County and with the Homeless Trust to make sure that they take into consideration our needs, our wants, and our visions, that we work together to make this a community as good as it could possibly be and not take the shortcut just to go ahead and do the quick fix because we know we can do it and it's needed, but rather take the long fix and do whatever's possible to make this the best community as possible, to lower the rent prices by increasing the supply. So that's what our vision is, and that's why we are grateful that Commissioner Cohen Higgins has given us the sixty days to look at alternative sites, which we're actively doing, and hopefully you are as well. And that we're going to continue to have an open line of communication as we're going forward to consider the different possibilities. But above all, I want to make sure that the citizens of Cutler Bay are aware of, number one, what was planned, what could be there, what the options are, and what their input is. Again, to the citizens of Cutler Bay, we can't make those decisions. It's not in our power to do that. That's in the Board of County Commissioners' power. But we're going to continue, and I know we've been working hard to make sure that the wants, needs, desires of Cutler Bay are known to them, and we're going to continue to do that. So with that, I'm going to ask Ron, if you could just come up just for another minute, and I'm going to ask you a couple of questions if I could. You had mentioned a letter that you received from the mall about covenants. And I understand that you said that many of those you could, would do and some you could not. Could you tell me which ones that you think are outside the limits of what you can do?
Part of what we said was that there were things within this polygraph that violated the number of the fair housing. Those are out there. What I've said is that number one, on the issue of background checks, we already review everybody that's coming in.
Is the mic on?
We already review everybody that's coming in. We will, our population has things in their background. Here's what we're not going to have. We're not going to have sexual predators. We're not going to have pedophiles. And by the way, today, when somebody checks into the La Quinta, or somebody checks into the Motel Six, they do no background check. And there are children in those hotels. That won't happen with us. You asked whether or not we would do security. We will not have twenty-four-hour security, but we will have security, and we will have cameras, and we will meet what Mr. Polikov asked us to do with the SEPTED standards. If the city wants to put in license plate readers, I got no problem with that. That's a safety issue. We all believe in those. You don't have them now. You don't have them at the Motel Six, but if you want to put that requirement on us, we don't have a problem with that. The issue of bringing the property up to code standards, let me repeat, we're going to be good citizens. If we violate the code, we expect the code officer to tell us that, and we'll correct it. But we will meet every standard that is in your code and in the county's code as it relates to the building. Employment verification for tenants, I've already told you, there will be people living there that are elderly that aren't employed. But I also told you, consistent with what Mr. Polikov asked, every tenant will be expected to pay rent, every tenant will sign a lease, and every tenant will have to live up to the terms of that lease, which includes quiet enjoyment of the property. You don't have that now. You don't have it at the Motel Six. You don't have it at the La Quinta.
Let me focus on a specific couple.
Yes, sir. I'm trying to go down his list and be sure I get them all.
If you could, like, for example, their age requirement, is that an issue?
Look, it's an issue for us, and we think that it violates the fair housing standards, but I can assure you that our priority is to house senior citizens, people over the age of fifty-five. That is the largest growing population of unsheltered and sheltered in our community.
When you say that's your priority, how do you get to that goal?
We get to that goal because we assess every individual in our continuum. Everybody that's in our shelters gets assessed. Everybody that comes in off the street gets assessed. Everybody has an assessment program.
Everybody goes through, I'm sorry, I'm Vicki Mallett, Executive Director of the Miami Dade County Homeless Trust. Everybody goes through an assessment, and one of the prioritization factors for referral is age and vulnerability.
Curious, do you have a scorecard? Or how do you, do you have the written guidelines? Okay, age is a priority. Where does it fit? Just out of curiosity.
We do have guidelines, and we have orders of priority. They're on our website.
They had mentioned a background to exclude rentals or felony convictions. Is that a possibility?
No.
Can you tell me why not?
No, I assure you, there'll be no predators and there'll be no pedophiles because we go deep enough into their background to know who they are. We don't allow them in our shelters. We're not going to allow them in the housing that we're developing here.
But felonies are okay?
There are, we, everybody is looked at on a case-by-case basis. If somebody just got out of prison for murder, manslaughter, they're going to be looked at in a very different way than somebody that's got a petty theft conviction twenty-five or thirty years ago. We look at the.
Excuse me. Hold on. Again, we're not just, I appreciate the comments, but again, in order for this to work, we'll have to have a conversation up here, and we'll try to get all these questions answered.
I want to answer her question, even though she shouted it out, if it's okay with you.
I would prefer that we just go ahead.
No, no.
No, no.
The mayor said no.
We're not going to lose control.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I will. I'm sorry.
Okay. I just need to know the answers, and I'm not going to have, just so the audience knows. We are not in a position to negotiate with the Homeless Trust. Again, we can ask what they're willing to do, and we can work with our commissioners, but I can't negotiate with them and have a dispute with them. This really just does us no good. So I understand the points, and yeah, we can argue those points, all these points we can argue with our county commissioners and the mayor and with the Homeless Trust, but it does us no good right now to try to go ahead and come to an agreement because number one, we're not going to. And number two, we know who we have to fight the battle with. It's not all right here. This is really a communication session for us to know where we stand and where we need to go, okay?
Mayor, out of the letter, because Vicki just pointed it out to me, we are not opposed to background checks, but we will not screen out households with housing and employment barriers as these are households that need our assistance in order to achieve economic stability, among others, seniors, disabled persons, and including veterans will be welcomed. Just so that you know that we're not, I'm going to repeat, we're going to be landlords and good stewards over the investment in the property we're providing. And Mayor, I appreciate what you've said, and while we're not negotiating, I certainly want the input on what you would want this place to look like because it will be an apartment building, not a shelter.
And again, you know, for the residents and for you, I want to gather as much information as possible of what you can bring, what you will bring, plan to bring, what the covenants are, because we need to take that in consideration with the bigger picture of other site selection, the sites, how this is going to fit in with the community. And to the residents, trust me, you know, we're asking the questions and we're getting the answers, doesn't mean we're going to let it lie. It just means we're getting the answers that we need to know where we are and where they are so we can move forward. What about the zero tolerance policy for committing criminal acts?
There are fair housing issues, and there's equal protection clauses, and I assure you that if somebody breaks the law, they break the law and they become a problem in the development, that's what the eviction process is about. I repeat, if you and I went down the street to ABC Apartment Complex today and we cleared their background, we cleared their economics, we signed a lease, and we committed some kind of a crime, we're protected from eviction in many ways. That said, I repeat, we don't want problems in our apartment buildings. We don't want problems within the five thousand-plus units of housing we lease every day throughout the community, and you don't read about it. I repeat, you don't read about crimes. And for the record, for the community, because I know all of you know this, but we pulled the same crime statistics on both hotel properties that you all have looked at. We know what those crime statistics look like, and I beg of you to understand that the people we asked to stand, we asked to stand so you could see that they look like law-abiding citizens because they are. That's the population we serve, people that fall in hard times.
I understand that. So basically, what I think, and again, you know, I don't know the intent of the mall letter, but.
Leave that open.
I think what they're looking to do is ensure as much as possible that usually when you find, and again, you don't like use emerged shelter, whether it's housing, but ensure that a criminal element, which is common in some of the homeless housing and shelters provided, is not going to be present here. And that's what we're looking for. I think that's what they're looking for, is those type of assurances that they are law-abiding citizens and that if they're not law-abiding citizens, that they're not going to be allowed to have the benefit of your shelter. You would think that would be easy enough to say, hey, listen, you have no criminal record, then you're going to be able to pay this amount of rent. But if you do have a criminal record, your rent's going to go up to this much. I don't know if that's something of potential or not. I guess, you know, that's something we'd have to explore or you would have to explore. But there's other ways to, what we're bottom line looking for is ways to assure that the criminal element is, which again, it's. again, whether it's a stigma, or the reality of it is, is not a predominant part, or even the least bit part, of the housing service that you're providing. I would think that you'd be able to hold people accountable for taking the advantage of the service that you're providing, and hold, and that's what we're looking for.
Mayor, in response to that, I would simply say that our apartment building will be an upgrade above a hotel that has pages and pages and pages of criminal complaints at both hotels, and the other places surrounding it, including the check cashing store, including showgirls, including the gas station. I would say to you that our population is not a criminal population, and I understand that some people see a stereotype, but these are law-abiding citizens, number one, and number two, I want to make clear the difference between using the word shelter and units of housing. These are apartments. In shelter, it's congregate living. In shelter, you don't pay rent. In shelter, you don't have a lease. In shelter, you may have some rules you're going to follow, but it's not nearly the level of scrutiny and strictness that will go into our standard lease agreement with every one of these tenants. Again, I got to tell you, I had no idea what the statistics would look like. We just decided a month or two ago to pull them, and again, they're just pages and pages from trafficking to assaults, batteries, disturbances. Quiet enjoyment is what our tenants expect and are going to be entitled to, and you as a community should be entitled to the same thing, as you are in every other apartment complex that you have within the boundaries of the city of Cutler Bay. Mayor, we don't look at this in any way, shape, or form as dumping. I know what this community was like before it was a city. I know what the surrounding communities were like before they were incorporated cities, and I watched the lawmakers fight to make these cities what they are. I can look at each of you with a clean, good conscience, and say to you that this would be an upgrade in your community, and you will be proud to have this in your community, because it's an apartment building that will have accountability, oversight, security, screening, and self-sustaining individuals, and not criminals.
I'm going to open it up to the council, see if they have any additional comments or questions from me. Vice Mayor Callahan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Book. I just need some clarifications on some things, kind of confused, because, you know, we, here's the homeless trust, but yet you're saying that this is going to be affordable housing, and that you're providing leases, and these individuals will pay rent. Where are these individuals currently? I mean, if they have the ability to pay rent, aren't they in a place already?
Mayor, through you.
Yes.
Vice Mayor, there are 2,700 people waiting for housing, that we have assessed and screened, and we have a lack of availability and affordability in the community, as you well know. And this is about creating availability, so we can move people out of those shelters that are prepared to be self-sustaining in the community and live in a rental apartment.
So these people are currently in the shelters, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
So if they had the ability to pay rent, why are they in a shelter?
Because we don't have an availability of housing, Mr. Vice. Mayor, through you, I apologize.
No, that's fine. I'm pretty liberal with that, I'll let you know.
$1,800 is fair market rent in this community, and most of these are not able to spend $1,800 on rent. We're going to set the price for rent, because we have to provide housing for all populations in our community, including those who are in that extremely lower income area, they're the working poor in our community, they're the people that drive the buses to take our children to school every day, they're the nurses that somehow, they're a lab tech, not a full nurse, you know what?
Ladies and gentlemen, please, Ron, Mr. Book, please address only the.
There are people that are working poor in our community, and it's well acknowledged. Those are the people, Mr. Vice Mayor, that will be living there.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Book. My second question is, as part of my job, I've done quite a bit of traveling throughout the country and stayed in my fair share of hotels. Granted, not a La Quinta or Motel 6, but the hotel rooms are very small. So, I mean, I'm just having, and also being a building contractor, and dealing with this type of stuff in my professional career, I just find it, I'm finding it hard to wrap my head around the size of these units, and the fact that you're going to, and I think I read, and correct me if I'm wrong, that two people would be able to live in these units, is that correct?
Yes, sir. And not in all of them, but in the bulk, in a number of them.
So two people, right? So here we are, we're going to retrofit a very small hotel room with a kitchen, we're going to put two people in there. Listen, I can stay in a hotel room for about four days before I got to get out, right? And so I'm just, I'm just trying to understand, you know, the Homeless Trust's point of view on the size of these particular units, and do these units meet the minimum square footage allowed by the Federal Housing Authority and by Miami Dade County?
The answer to your question is, these are micro-units. I made that mention of that in my main comments. There are micro-units all over this community being built today that are smaller than the 330, 340-foot units in the La Quinta. The bulk of the units, as I was corrected by Vicky, will be single occupancy units, although there will be up to two in a number of the units. But we're able to keep the rent low because of the size of the unit, period. It's an issue of affordability and availability, not one, they're not inseparable, they're, you've got to look at them in the whole. I got it, you and I may not want to live in a microunit, but I can tell you, I was having a conversation with Steve Ross from the related companies yesterday, and he's building 250-foot units in New York City, and can't build them fast enough. I got, we're not New York City, but they got a housing crunch too, on availability and affordability, and that's what they're building new. We're paying basically $130,000 a unit for these units, that will be micro, will be retrofitted with kitchenettes, so that they can self-sustain themselves in each unit.
So to answer my question, they do meet minimum Federal Housing Authority and Miami Dade County standards?
They meet the standards, sir.
Thank you. So my last question, in following up with what the mayor's comments were, so you have clearly stated that there is a particular tolerance on behavior in these units, and that if residents do not follow these standards, that they would be evicted?
Could you repeat your question? I apologize.
Sure. You had stated that there is a, there's going to be a minimum standard that the residents are going to be held, right?
Yes, sir.
And if they do not follow these standards, then they will be evicted, is that correct?
Maintain your unit, pay your rent on time, and quiet enjoyment will be the three key elements before somebody ultimately would get evicted.
So.
Quiet enjoyment, quiet enjoyment, quiet enjoyment, and that should be your concern, and that's a fair concern, and I assure you that we will not tolerate, we've moved to have people evicted directly.
My question was that if they do not follow the standards that you just stated, that they would be evicted, is that correct?
Those are the three elements, and yes, sir, if they're violating one of those three, they will be evicted.
So when you evict them, where are they going to go? Right back to the.
We will cross that bridge when we get to it.
Perfect. Thank you, thank you very much.
No, no, no.
Any else?
Hold on, please. Go ahead.
So if I could answer that question, eviction is rare, and we didn't go over it in detail, but in one of our sites, you saw what our retention rate is in supportive housing in this community. These individuals will have case management.
Vicky.
98% of the time, when we place people in supportive housing in Miami Dade County, they retain that housing. Do they have fair housing rights, and is there a fair housing act in this nation? Absolutely, yes. But we don't want to evict, because we don't want people to return to the streets. We have crisis housing, the five shelters in our community, and we move heaven and earth, not only to move people who might face eviction, either transfer them, or return them back to a shelter situation while we work with them further. We also respond to this council, and commissioners, and other local officials in law enforcement when you CC people on your bus stops, along your busway. We are the ones working really hard along that busway with your law enforcement, with the transit department, answering your concerns, assuring you that we're on it. And I just want to point out that one of the most telling cases was at the South Dade Municipal Meeting, Mr. Mayor, and there were, we had conversations about housing at large in that meeting, and I remember the city of Pinecrest being there and being particularly concerned about an individual, a woman, a veteran, who had lived in an apartment unit in Pinecrest for some time, and there was turmoil in that household, and the mother who was paying the rent became too ill to care for her, and I believe she had mental illness, and she had languished on the sidewalks of Pinecrest for months and months and months. At that meeting, I learned of that case, and shortly thereafter, within weeks, we had engaged that household multiple times, we had removed that female veteran from the streets of Miami Dade County, and she is now under the umbrella, safely housed in an assisted living facility within our continuum of care. That's how we try to be responsive to you.
Councilman Duncan, you're recognized.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me, again.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do just have two questions for clarification purposes on this.
Yes, sir.
You had mentioned that we currently have 980, roughly 980 unsheltered. With this proposed project, how many of those would be impacted directly? How would we be able to lower that number from this project?
Our plan is to move people out of shelter, to create capacity, move people off the streets, back into shelters, so that we can get them, so that they can get themselves ready. I'm sorry, let me repeat the answer. Our plan is to move people from shelter that are stable and ready to be self-sustaining into housing units at the La Quinta soon-to-be highways on the bay. That creates capacity in the shelter for us to move more people off the street out of that 980. Could somebody within that 980 be an episodically or situationally a homeless person that is immediately ready to be housed, because they don't have mental health issues, substance abuse issues, alcohol issues, and move in? That is very possible. So I'm not going to sit here and tell you that someone within that 980 wouldn't qualify, but that person's got to be screened, got to be assessed, and put in our prioritized order based on what they may have. It could be somebody that's recently become an amputee, it could be somebody that's got some other physical disability, it could be, again, we end up with lots of people that fall in hard times, and they're not that problem person that some people seem to think they are. They are human beings like you and me.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Second question.
Yes, sir.
Going based on the presentation that the mayor provided, which I want to thank you for sharing a lot of that vision, the charrette and everything with our residents here, one of my big concerns, specifically with the location, is we do have this development that's coming, and bigger picture, you're looking at developing at some point in time on both sides of Caribbean Boulevard, not just on the Southland Mall property. So we have properties here that are kind of ripe for future development, that's going to fit within the town's vision, within the residents' vision that was created within this charrette 15-plus years ago. So with all that being said, I am concerned that essentially just purchasing the La Quinta, and then not really making any other adjustments besides cleaning it up and keeping it the same size, keeping it the same floor plan, is not necessarily going to be compatible with this big overall vision that we have for this area. Have you also looked at, and correct me if I am wrong, the check cashing property, the gas station property, because this La Quinta property is tucked away, it has properties in front of it, I would be weary, from a future development standpoint, that if this were to proceed, that that might hinder future development on those other properties directly on Caribbean, that is then going to be a negative impact on our overall design.
I think, I think that if there are physical changes to the building that we can make to make it more compatible with the Southland Mall redevelopment, number one, we're prepared to do that. Number two, as it relates to the check cashing store, the Motel 6, the gas station, we've told the manager, I'm prepared to buy those as well, and improve them, and improve them dramatically. But nobody wants me to do that, so we're not proposing that. A lot of people had opportunities to acquire all these lands, and they haven't done it. We're here, and we're here now, and if down the road, there is an issue with compatibility, and somebody wants to provide us with some other alternative, and buy it out from under us at a later date for an increased price, because I got to tell you, I'm known to be cheap and frugal and into the words free as chairman of this body. I guard the tax dollars that are provided to me and to our board to implement the plan to end homelessness, seriously. Stand up at a board meeting and ask the question, what's his favorite word? And everybody will shout free. What's his favorite phrase? Cheap and frugal. But what I won't do is cheat the community. What I won't do is allow our building to bring down your values. The values of what they are now, we will be an enhancement, I promise you that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Councilman Lord?
Hi, Mr. Book.
Nice to see you too, thank you.
I just have, many of my questions have already been answered, so thank you for your time. I have a couple of smaller questions. I know that in your presentation, you said that seniors, veterans are your priority or welcomed, I think was the word that you used. Do you have any idea what percentage you would, can you give us a percentage of how many of the people who could potentially live there will be a senior or a veteran?
One in every four individuals that come into our continuum are over the age of 55. I assure you that the vast majority, the vast majority of the tenants in this apartment complex will be senior citizens. They will be over the age of 55. I want to remind you of a fact I didn't lay out there earlier, but may be known to you. The average homeless person has a life expectancy of 13 to 17 fewer years than us. So when we look at senior citizens, we look at the age of 55, not the age of 60 or 65. So in representing it to you, it's age 55 that we look at as seniors, and if you said to me, and I don't really want to do it, but I'll say to you, if you said to me, I want a minimum of 60% of your residents to be over the age of 55, I'll look you straight in the face and tell you I'll do that tomorrow morning, because that's the population we serve. We know where the need is, we know where the demand is, and Mr. Mayor, I apologize, I didn't go through you, I apologize. I try to follow the rules.
Understood.
Thank you. But just know that that's where we are, and that's what we see it as.
That makes it a lot more palpable to the town if we had the larger component, or the larger amount of residents there, over 55, over 60, many of them are veterans, veterans have a very hard time finding housing. I have another question, the rent amount, like, how is that determined? Because I know that social security, or whatever it is, most of these people are living on, they all vary in amounts, and so I'm just interested in how we determine what the rent is.
So typically, we use a model where people pay 30% of whatever their income is toward rent. Typically, we use a model where whatever the income is, 30% of a person's income goes toward rent, and we work to increase that, earned income as well as unearned income.
Okay, thank you for that, and just one more, maybe two more questions. You refer to the potential residents there having to be a good neighbor. You've used that phrase a handful of times tonight. What's a good neighbor? Like, what do you? What is that definition?
Mayor, through you. Good neighbor is the definition of quiet enjoyment. It means you don't disturb your next door neighbor. It doesn't, it means you don't disturb on either side of you and you're not an unfriendly neighbor in the community, in that apartment complex, period. That's what I have control over. That's what any tenant under a lease, residential lease arrangement would have. Quiet enjoyment. It means you're not playing music at eleven o'clock at night. It means you're not shooting off fireworks. It means you're not out on the streets in front of the building, drinking and doing things that some people have suggested on social media on this subject have raised. That's just not what we do. And I would say one thing to you, I said this to our team earlier in the day. I almost shot a video of our shelter because I wanted you to see the difference between congregate living and apartment style living, number one. And number two, I wanted you to see what a shelter that we own on North Miami Avenue. After thirty years, not only what it looks like in upkeep, but what those shelter residents do each day. You don't find them loitering in front of the shelter. You don't see them lying on the sidewalks. You don't see vagrancy and you don't see criminal activity. And every morning, a school bus shows up in front of my shelters, picks those little kids up and takes them to school just like yours and my grandkids every day. Because they're normal, regular citizens who just are waiting for a housing opportunity, which we're trying to give to them.
Understood. My questions are geared because my day job, I'm a paralegal. One of my clients has low income housing. We have a large problem with that client's, some of the residents, the loitering, the hanging out outside, drinking, smoking all night long. I'm not saying that's what's going to happen here. I'm saying in my day job, I see it all the time. And you know, there will not be twenty-four hour security at this hotel, I mean, excuse me, these apartments. So I have those concerns. I'm sure the residents who are here tonight also share some of those concerns. I've also seen this stuff that's been written online. And so that's why I have this line of questioning. My last question really is, as to the eviction, is your process any different than would be a normal eviction? Is it faster or do you go through the process like any other landlord would?
Mayor, through you.
Yes.
We knew exactly what other landlords would do. And I might add, because I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize in the front row, Judge Lifeman, who came in, he was outside, who sits on our board and is the, and is the presiding judge over the county court division. He would be far more expert about the eviction process, but it is the normal eviction process.
Thank you very much for your time.
Councilwoman Ramirez.
Good evening. So here's something else I need to clear up. It started as a homeless shelter. It went to a senior living facility.
Just wait a minute.
Senior living facility. Then it was a transitional unit and now we're back to a senior living facility. So what are we going to have? I mean, you're proposing a senior living, again, affordable senior living, but the narrative keeps changing.
Mayor, through you.
Yes.
Let me be clear, councilman. Let me be abundantly clear. It was never a shelter. Not one day, not one moment, not one word came from us or the Board of County Commissioners, not one word that this was ever going to be a shelter. The narrative from our end has never changed. This was always going to be permanent supportive housing, period. It was never anything other than that and no one could show you anything otherwise. Not in any public records request, not in any video of any of our meetings, never has that been in. That narrative was created by someone in the community. It is untrue. And I can tell you, I've addressed that with the manager and with your city attorney before today because the narrative was wrong. We didn't put that out there.
Let me ask you this because you and I are in the same room. You did not say that this was going to be transitional living housing at the county commission meeting when Commissioner Cohen Higgins asked about extending sixty days to find a better location. I just want to get your comment on that. Did you not say that you were proposing transitional housing?
It's permanent supportive housing, not transitional, permanent. That is what I said then and that is what I'll say again now. I didn't, I've not changed the story. I haven't changed the message. Vicky, go ahead, please.
It's, there's housing types. Permanent supportive housing is a housing type. It's non-time limited. People could live there two years, five years, twenty-five years. I think a lot of times the word transitional is bounced around because people are in a transition potentially in their lives, working towards something more. So for the individual, it could be transitional, but for us, it's permanent supportive. We're not going to insist anyone leave just because. And transitional housing typically comes with a fixed time period. You can be here two years, up to two years, up to twenty-four months, and then you have to go. Well, there's been. Two years comes up and you have a person, you know, who's vulnerable and then they're right back into homelessness after twenty-four months. This is permanent supportive housing. Through the mayor, I'd also like to address the point about low income housing that the councilwoman brought up. Low income housing doesn't have onsite case management. Low income housing doesn't have supportive services. We have that.
Anything else? I didn't, I wasn't trying to be argumentative, but just trying to make a, get some clarity here because we were in the same room.
I know.
Transitional housing comment from you actually was made. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
You did mention a couple of covenants, again, never having a needle exchange in our program. And you can't guarantee non-felons. You can't guarantee seniors. Are you able to put that as a priority in your intake process?
Yes.
Will you do that?
Yes.
For the audience and the citizens, you maybe think, all right, well, we're not arguing points up here. And let me tell you why, because it does no good to argue points here. Sorry about that. You may be wondering why I'm not arguing points up here because it does no good. It's just a bunch of sound and fury. It means nothing. We aren't, again, as I said earlier, we're not in negotiation with the homeless trust. We can't work, we can get information from them and share our ideas with them, which I think we've done. But really, we have to work with our county commissioners and the mayor. We're going to continue to work with the homeless trust, but I'm not going to argue whether the semantics of whether, you know, a person is long-term disabled or a drug addict or a felon or any of these arguments, it's almost pointless to argue here. The idea here was for them to bring as much information possible to us. They've answered a lot of questions. And I'm going to open the floor up to the citizens to ask questions, but I'd ask you not to do this. Don't argue with them because it's not going to do us any good. We know who we have to argue with. We know whose points we have to make, get across to. Okay? We want to work together to put every possible idea that we can to come up with the best solution for the community. Again, I don't want this to be like, I disagree with you, you disagree with me. The community as a whole is what we're looking to improve. Our focus is on Cutler Bay. Their focus on homelessness. We're going to argue, we're going to continue to work with the homeless trusts. This has been the most dialogue we've had, which has been very refreshing. We don't agree on a lot of things. We don't agree on a lot of points. We don't have to agree. Again, because, you know, they're not the ones going to be making the decision. They've agreed to, Mr. Book did tell me today that he's happy to look at other sites and take that into consideration. He wants what's going to be best for the homeless trust. And we want to see if we can work that in what's going to be best for Cutler Bay. So we're going to continue to work really, really hard to do that. We've been working hard at this for months. I couldn't tell you the number of meetings that I've had with Ralph and our town attorneys and our commissioners and the mayors and everybody else. It's been an ongoing process and we're going to continue to do that. So if I would prefer, I'm going to open the floor for questions. I would prefer not people to come up and just tell you how great it is. I understand the people from Mikasa are going to, would love to come up and tell you how wonderful life is. And I've heard Ron Book talk about that at the Board of County Commissioners. I've heard many of the residents talk about how it's a positive thing on their life. And they're, by all means, they're law-abiding, positive citizens for that area. But that's not really what I'm here to learn. I'm really kind of here to learn what exactly is going to go there. How is it going to? Any other questions we might have? I also, the same token, really would prefer that people not come up and just tell you how much I'm against it because, you know what, it's, it always leads to blight. There's always the winos on the streets and the drug addicts and that's all we're going to get. Because again, that's going to do no good here.
Yes.
To try to find out, to get, there's two things. Number one, I'd like to find another site for this without a doubt. That's my personal opinion. But I don't, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. That's not up to me and it's not up to this council. Okay? So the other thing is to find out exactly what could go there, what can be made. And just as, again, as, to make whatever is going to be possible, whether it's here or another part of District Eight or anywhere else in the county, as good as possible. So if there are any questions that you think that we're not going to answer, I'm going to encourage you to come up and ask those. And I'm going to ask, anybody ask a question. We don't need applause. Okay? Ninety, ninety-five percent of this room is on your side. Okay? And we can clap and feel good about that, but that's not going to get us where we need to go. We're all on the, we're all on the same team, trying to make the community better. We just want to try to get as much information as possible. So if you could indulge me and not share that you're against it or for it, because I know you're sharing, whether you're for it or against it with the Board of County Commissioners and the mayor, and that's what you need to do and continue to do it. But if there's any questions that have not been asked and you want to get those answers, I'm going to ask you to go ahead and get in line and I will give you a minute each. Yes. Yeah, hold it quiet, please.
Mayor, just one last thing to you and to the council. To the question that Councilwoman Lord raised, I want to look you straight in the face and tell you, I am prepared to commit to a sixty percent occupancy of the apartment building being people over the age of fifty-five.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you for the time and I'm happy to answer.
And to keep control of this, and again, to keep control of this, the question will be asked through me.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
And I will decide whether we're going to.
You will tell me when I need to answer.
All right. So if you could please come up and give me your name and your comments, please.
Good evening. My name is Tom Groom. I've been living in Cutler Bay for twenty-eight years. Born in Dade County seventy-one years ago. This is home except for my time in the Air Force. First question I'd like to get answered is what's the capacity of this new apartment building going to be? And is there a percentage of that that is going to be reserved for homeless veterans that may or may not be in shelters? Being a veteran, that's very geared to my hearts. We'll put that right there. The second, my second part of all this is traffic. We live on three of the worst roads in this area. The exit from the Florida Turnpike, the entrance to the Florida Turnpike, Caribbean Boulevard is being torn up past the canal. Okay? Traffic here in the morning is horrendous and we go out onto US One and it's horrible. So you're going to bring in elderly people, people that might have some problems. You're going to put them in a traffic area.
I appreciate that.
In a traffic area and their safety is concerned, especially with Southland Mall getting ready to be renovated.
I appreciate it.
My last part of that is to the gentleman from Homeless Trust, when is this going to start construction, retrofitting, and how long is it going to take?
Right. Thank you for the questions. And Ron, if you just put off on those questions just for a minute and let the next person on make a couple of lists of them, keep those in mind. Next, next.
Good evening. My name is Doris Aslimak and I too have lived in Cutler Bay more than half of my life now. I'm pretty young still, so anyway, my questions are, will the residents be citizens or non-citizens? Will there be any children? I would love to see, Suzie mentioned about having sixty percent or more. I would rather it be a senior living facility, to be honest with you. A fifty-five and over community would, I think, give everybody an even better sense of what may be down the road in the future. And the gentleman, I'm sorry, can't remember your name. He said several times, he mentioned Motel Six. This particular meeting is about the La Quinta and I think we've all been concerned that what's next? Is it going to be Motel Six next and all the other little properties and Tim, to your point? You know, my last, no. The last question that I had was about, Mr. Mayor, you had mentioned about those little properties and what's going to happen in there. Well, if we could take those two hotels and actually the courtyard and all of that in there because we have no hotels in Cutler Bay at all.
I'll address that issue as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Hi, yes. Good evening. My name's Yamaa Desla. I am a resident here at Cutler Bay. I also teach across the street at Miami Southridge Senior High School. So I have personal knowledge of the homeless trust. Every year, you guys do phenomenal work for our students, but that is not why I'm here. My question is this, you mentioned there is a sixty-day hold. Would you be addressing when that sixty-day hold actually expires for us? And what steps you're taking in regard to, you said, the alternative sites? Do you have to make recommendations to the mayor and the commissioner? Because you stated that we as Cutler Bay don't have a voice in this. They ultimately make the decision. Meaning my follow-up question is this, if you find three other alternative sites and you recommend it to them, can they say, thank you, but no thank you? Or do they actually then have to then do a separate study to determine if those other sites are more applicable? Thank you very much.
Barbara Condon. Two months ago in September, the county commission went to to approve the budget. At that time, this was named in the budget as a place for chronically homeless people. Our representative changed some of the language in there, but I want to know why it was chronically homeless and why now are they denying that it was going to be chronically homeless? Because that is how it was named in the budget.
Thank you. Next question.
Hi, I'm Jeremiah Pena. I've been living in Cutler Bay since I was five. On a personal note, it feels weird to be on this side of the council. I work with Village of Pinecrest on the communication team, so I understand all that you go through because I hear it all the time at Pinecrest. My question is, is for the homeless trust, you mentioned that they're all outstanding citizens. What is the statistic of when they're not anymore? Because we have parks, a couple of schools. What is to prevent them from one day just be like, you know what? Life's not good enough anymore. Might as well have fun.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Angel Garcia. I live here in Cutler Bay. I'm one of the residents. My first question is, Mr. Book said that if redevelopment comes and we want to redevelop that area, that he would sell the property. This being said, if it's a Miami-Dade property, are you allowed to sell?
We'll have to answer.
All right, thank you.
Okay. My last thing is, I don't want Mr. Ron Book or the homeless trust to think that the residents of Cutler Bay are being insensitive about the homeless. Because everybody here, especially Sergeant Reed, could tell you, I go around town giving water to our homeless and catching names to get them into shelters, but they tell me they don't want to go nowhere, Mayor. Are they homeless or are they street people? That's where we got to draw the line. Thank you.
Hi, Lazar Merbal. I'm a resident of Cutler Bay. I have just two questions. The property was worth six million in 2021. Why are they paying fourteen million for this property now? Another question, they said in their slides that they're not doing clustered housing. So why are they talking about Motel Six now? And then the other question is, if this project is mixed-use, why can't it just be a hundred percent elderly? Our biggest gripe was that we weren't asked for a vote. That's it. That's why you guys are out there and can't negotiate. We were bypassed by the RTZ. Just want to say that. Thanks. Just want to say that. Thanks.
Thomas Condon, one nine six four one Holly Road. My question is, why are they picking this location? A budding La Quinta property is the Showgirl Strip Club, where would-be residents, many of whom would have struggled with substances used in the past, can easily access alcohol and strippers, all courtesy of the Homeless Trust and Miami-Dade County's massive oversight. Some needing income even become strippers or prostitutes themselves. The new location is also next to the billion-dollar redevelopment project at Southland Mall. As we strive to invest in our town, this project poses an untenable security risk. If you deny this, just ask yourself, why does the property necessitate onsite case management and monitoring, almost unlike almost every other Cutler Bay apartment? See professionally printed shirts in the audience reading, why don't you want me in Cutler Bay? Part of a well-funded advocacy campaign to counter community grassroots opposition to this project. Well, instead of this obviously some prime location, why not consider placing a shelter like this near the director of the Homeless Trust's house? There's a country club nearby, but strangely enough, not many shelters.
Right. Good evening, Town Council. My name is Elizabeth Soto, and I'm a resident of Cutler Bay. For the sake through the chair, through the mayor, for the sake of transparency, does the trust's chairman, private firm, provide conflict of interest disclosures stating that his past and current clients are not stakeholders benefiting from this initiative in any way? And have there been any more audits after the Office of Inspector General determined significant deficiencies in the trust's ability to ensure costs are adequately supported and program income reported? My third question is, if the trust seeks to purchase buildings at a reasonable price point, what justification exists in the willingness to purchase La Quinta Inn for four million dollars above the appraised property value? Thank you.
Good night. My name is Sandra Wong. I'm a resident, a voting citizen.
And With a migraine, phone down your mouth, please, and talk to me.
My question is, well, first, um, the people that you brought, I look at them very closely. They all seem to me like they have a lot of medical necessities. We are overcrowded at Jackson South. That's the hospital. What would you provide to help with these people? Because the next hospital is Homestead, and the other hospital is Baptist. Where are these people going to go? I have two disabled kids. I spent fourteen hours in the emergency room waiting, because there were so many other big emergencies. Okay? You say that you have people fifty-five and up, and they are working people? What type of job are they doing? If they need transportation, what type of transportation do they need? Because they
Wait, wait, the next question, next presenter, please. Thank you.
Well, I go at my time.
Good evening. Thank you for the time. I have a few questions. One of them being that Miami Beach is currently going through an ordinance where if they find people who are unhoused, they are given the option to potentially go to a shelter and or become incarcerated. With that funding that you're receiving from Miami Beach, is this also going to go to the housing? South Dade, in comparison to the census, actually, well, Cutler Bay in the in the current census actually has a higher rental median rate than the rest of the county. So when and if people are leaving the housing units, what are they going to do when this area is actually higher than the rest of the county per the census? And in terms of resource scarcity, this area does not have too many resources in terms of medical and jobs where ninety percent of the residents have to commute. And they commute further and longer than others. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Um, Christina Scott. I'm with Legal Services of Greater Miami. Um, we obviously support the Homeless Trust and the great work they do in the community. I do not have a question more so of a comment, because I hear multiple comments about age restrictions and things of that sort. I just want to come up here to remind um this body of the Fair Housing Act and its restrictions and the fact that affordable housing is a protected class, and we're being mindful that we are not violating the Fair Housing Act by putting on these additional restrictions. Thank you for your time.
Hi, good uh good evening. My name is Roxana Solano, and I run Mia Casa Assisted Living, um Mia Casa Transitional Housing. Um, I'm not gonna talk about how wonderful Mia Casa is, but but it is. I just want to tell you how I got into this, and I understand the feeling of the community. I opened Mia Casa as an assisted living facility. When COVID hit, I opened Mia Casa as an assisted living facility. It was called Villa Serena North. When COVID hit, I had no residence, and my payment, my mortgage payment was fifty-five thousand dollars a month. The how they needed a place where to house the seniors, um, the the seniors homeless experiencing homelessness. I was concerned like everybody else, because the images of homeless is not the best image. So I was very concerned, but I had a mortgage to pay. So I opened it. I agreed. I was the landlord. And um when the first band showed up with the my first group of homeless, I was like, oh, where do I get into? Three years later, I had the opportunity to turn it back into an ALF, and I chose not to, because I did not feel like churning a hundred and twenty people out. Let me tell you how homeless happened.
Very much your time is expired.
My name is Sally Throckmorton. I've lived in Cutler Bay since nineteen sixty-five. I'm an old fart, but but with that said, I I think I do have an idea. The Homeless Trust seems to have plenty of money to buy whatever they want. Why don't they look at some of the land that's available further south and put up those tiny homes? They've got to be, most of them are at least four hundred square feet, so they're gonna be bigger than any of these little apartments, and they're custom-made, and they're very inexpensive. When he said a hundred and thirty thousand for one unit, I almost had a heart attack. That's insane. But these these little homes and and I I just saw one, as a matter of fact, today on Amazon, you could buy it for twelve thousand dollars. It's already, it's four hundred square feet, and then you customize the inside. It could not cost a hundred and thirty thousand.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Throckmorton. Yeah, but again, I'd like to remind, at least I'm looking for questions that we can ask. Uh, the the opinions are great. We can share those with the county commission anytime, but continue.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, my question is twofold. One, if these are gonna be uh sort of subsidized rental income, you had mentioned it was about thirty percent of the actual salary or thirty percent of the actual income that these individuals make, the rest was gonna be subsidized. Is that going to affect our tax burden here for Cutler Bay and our community? And how is that going to increase? Number two, as far as the additional housing, is there going to be a limitation on the expansion for this project into those other areas? And whether or not that is going to impact the actual Cutler Bay community as far as transport, um the parking spaces and things of that nature, the sewer lines, and all of the other impacts that affect redevelopment zoning in this area? Number three, as far as the new project for the Cutler Bay Southland Mall project, what is the study, if any, has been done in relation to the disparity in rent decrease from that new project that is currently underway compared to what is being proposed by the Homeless Trust? Thank you.
Yeah, my name's Tom Condon. I just wanted to know where are the um residents of this facility going to be from? Are local residents going to have priority? Um, people that live in this area, I know that the city of Miami has contributed about four million or so dollars. Um, are they going to be from from there? Are we assuming the city of Miami's homeless problem? Um, and when the, because when these people are evicted, if they are evicted, they're going to probably stay nearby. So that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is uh Chaplain Young, Stanley Young. I'm a chaplain here in Miami-Dade County. I moved here two thousand sixteen to Miami-Dade County, coming to the realization that I didn't have the income to live and buy a place to stay in Miami-Dade County, and I found myself homeless on the streets, living in my car, trying to get a place to stay, trying to get affordable income to afford a place to stay. Until I came into the Homeless Trust and Miami Rescue Mission that they support, that that they uh help uh to help me, get me a place where I could stay and feel protected and feel safe. I know right now, probably talking to eighty percent of you who've never been homeless before know what it feels to live in your own car or live without a place of your own.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Hilda Fernandez. I am the CEO of Camilla's House. It provides thirteen hundred units of permanent supported housing in this community. We may be no far emergency shelter. The fact remains that what we primarily do is provide safe housing for people who have gone through the struggle of getting back on their feet and are looking for a safe and decent place to live. I assure you that after the the difficulty that it is to get placed into shelter in Miami-Dade County, because there's not enough of it, to go through the process to get your paperwork, employment, whatever it is you need to get stabilized, and then includes employment, our clients are desperate to keep the housing. Our retention rates in permanent housing throughout this community and programs we operate is ninety-eight percent. That's above average of what a regular landlord would do in terms of their vacancy rates, and that's because the folks who are placed there are very grateful and very much understand the difference of what would happen if they were not able to retain that housing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And uh Mr. Wors will be the last uh question after that. You've already had one, Angel. Sorry. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Andres Regalano. I'm a resident of Cutler Bay since two thousand seventeen. Um, I just wonder if there's a better way of doing this, because what does Cutler Bay want to do? Or we're trying to redevelop this property that we're on right now with Southland Mall and with the the Homeless Trust taking over a property right across the street. We're trying to attract other, you know, high-end companies to come here and sell things. It's gonna be very difficult with, you know, a homeless shelter across the street. I'm wondering if it might not be better to redevelop the pictures that you're showing of uh high-rise apartments, and maybe there's a percentage that we can offer of those uh units at in like a um, you know, where you pay eight dollars of rent or, you know, something like that, where they it's rent, assisted rent uh not instead of making a whole building a homeless shelter in the middle of an area that's trying to redevelop. I think that might be another option instead of just, you know, giving the homeless a a whole building. Thank you very much.
Thank you again. These are the last three questions, and we're gonna move along.
Good evening. Nathan Watar's uh resident since about nineteen seventy-nine, for the most part, work and live in this community. Um, I'll keep the questions. Cutler Bay, do we lose property taxes uh on the properties, potential property, you know, when it's redeveloped in another way? Want to reiterate the question about how many vets we can get in there? Um, and also, will they be residents of Cutler Bay that will be able to vote in our elections and things like that? Thanks.
Mr. Mayor and council, my name's Stephen Alvarez. I've lived in Cutler Bay for fourteen years. I have two teenage, two teenage uh, two teenagers and uh my daughter's six years old. She's in Whispering Pines. I know you're probably thinking I'm kind of old for a six-year-old, but best time of my life. Um, you know, I'm fortunate to be a homeowner and uh have a roof over my head, but there are people that need housing. Um, full disclosure, I am a provider, New Hope. Um, I operate a behavioral health care facility in Homestead, and I'm also an outreach provider for the Homeless Trust. Um, we are an access point for shelter and for housing, and so as an outreach provider, it's frustrating when we're trying to get individuals into shelter that accept shelter and but we can't get them in because there's no housings. There's a bottleneck in the shelters. Um, uh, I've served in the South Dade Housing and Service Coalition and uh on on the Homeless Trust Board, and I've been an advocate for these services for over twenty-five years. I've been fighting with the Homeless Trust for for services and housing in South Dade, and now you're bringing it to South Dade.
I understand. Thank you. Thank you. Next.
And I can't say not in my community. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Zulie Weiss, and um I've been to school with your sisters, so that's how long I've been here. Um, I think that we should get the Hampton Inn in Dade Land. It's close to the Metro Rail, plenty of stores, Target, plenty of places to work, restaurants up across to here. Let's go into those communities and stop coming into these communities where we're trying to become a better community. And also, uh, Joanne Fabrics every day has to push out all the people that they bring over here, because the the head of our church told us that they brought some man in North Miami called I'm homeless. What do I do? He said, well, I can't get you. You're in North Miami. But the next day he was there, and he took him to the Quinta Inn where he could get a shower, a sleep, and a breakfast. They all hang out at the little preschool. She has to call every day to get them out. What happens when they close the preschool? And the people that work there have no money.
Thank you very much. Um, and again, no, we're gonna move along. Um, Ron, you have a lot of questions, and some, I understand, are kind of a bigger picture items than than what you can actually do. Um, so I'm gonna ask you to try to answer as many of those questions as you can, and then try to be as as brief as you can. And those that you can answer, I'm gonna I've got it done down a number of myself, and I'll try to answer myself. So if you want to start firing them out and through me, I would appreciate it.
So first of all, uh, and both of us are gonna answer some. Do you want to ask some questions? You want me to go through my list?
If you could address the questions you heard and as many as possible.
Let's start. Let's start with the woman's low blow, because if people want to go low, I can go low too, but I don't go low. I stay high. The woman raised the issue of conflicts. Mayor, I, as you know, you and I spoke earlier today about some of the anonymous posts that have been posted out there by people from this city. I'm not gonna respond back and forth, but I am gonna respond to somebody who stands up here and calls my ethics into question. I don't take clients in this space. I don't represent people in this space, and I defy anybody to show where I have a conflict in any representation I have in coming before the Homeless Trust. Doesn't happen, hasn't happened, not in thirty-three years, and I resent the question. If the woman has a specific she wants to raise, have her come up to the mic and raise it, because that's just wrong. It's made up and it's phony. Secondly, let me repeat again, this is not a shelter. I heard several people come back up and refer to it as a shelter. I said to the gentleman three people ago as he left the mic, it is not going to be a shelter for the last time. It never was and never will be. Number three, the gentleman who asked the question about veterans. I thought I mentioned it earlier, but if I missed it, I want to make it clear. We're the first community in the United States, we're number seventy-seven to raise, to reach an end to veterans homelessness. We're the only community that was held to a standard that no other community could be held to. Why? Because communities like Houston and New Orleans, who declared an end to veterans homelessness, had hundreds more in line the day after they declared there was an end. We have reached an end to veterans homelessness, and I assure the gentleman that asked the question that veterans are high on our priority list in placement. When we assess folks, that's one of the key questions we ask. Are you a veteran? Uh, I'm not sure what the woman was referring to on the audit. Uh, Vicky, do you want to answer anything on the audit question that was raised?
Uh, I'll just give an example of one of the findings, and it kind of answers another question that was put out there. It did say in the budget book chronically homeless, and I want to make clear what chronically homeless is. You are disabled, you have a disability. Typically, you're receiving a disability check from the federal government. We're not determining the disability the federal government is, and you're on a check for about nine hundred dollars a month. That's one piece of the chronic homeless definition. The other piece is you've been homeless a year or more or four times in the last three years. That is more often than not, somebody who's been languishing in a shelter, that means they're homeless for more than three hundred and sixty-five days, desperately searching for housing outside the walls of shelters. So those two components equal chronic homelessness. The seniors we're talking about are chronically homeless. Many of them are disabled. Many of them have been in shelters a year or more. Um, I hope that answers.
Hit the traffic.
And then as far I I I'll say with the traffic issue, I mean, it's ideal for our clients to be in the RTZ. I'll say with the traffic issue, I mean, it's ideal for our clients to be in the RTZ. We know when affordable development goes, affordable developments go up around the community that we don't need as much parking and those affordable developments don't need as much parking because those people rely, these individuals with lower incomes rely on public transportation. They don't have cars.
To follow up on the traffic piece because it was raised by a couple of folks. The busway is here. The spots to move around are here and there'll be fewer cars, not more cars. On the issue, yep.
I do want to directly answer the audit question too. This was an audit that's been closed out, but we were cited several years ago. One of the providers in the continuum was cited because a person was housed in a unit to a person who was chronically homeless. That person was housed, safely stayed stable, retained that housing. When HUD came to check the file to say, did this person have 365 days of homelessness? And did they have a documented disability? The disability paperwork was not in the file. So while the person was safely and securely housed, the person had been homeless, the piece of paper wasn't in the file. So that provider ended up reimbursing us for the time that the federal government paid the rent for that individual. HUD wants its funding to prioritize people for housing who are among the most vulnerable and that is part of our mission.
On the question related to immigration, which was not, the young lady avoided using the word immigration. The gentleman avoided using the word immigration. It was raised by two individuals. Let me be clear. The federal government owns immigration policy, not Miami-Dade County, not Miami-Dade County Homeless Trust or any other governmental entity in this community. We have repeatedly called on the White House and Congress to do something to solve the problem. Had a conversation today at the housing summit on the issue. The fact of the matter is in 1980, I worked for Bob Graham. I got sent to Key West to deal with the Mario boat lift. The one thing Jimmy Carter did right, real clear, is he reimbursed Monroe County, Key West, Miami-Dade County, Broward County, for all of the costs that we incurred, including costs at Jackson Memorial and other providers in this community. What this administration has not done is deal with that issue. I can assure you that the 980 unsheltered individuals and the 2,700 in various shelters are our priority, not new entrance into this community. Period. And our providers are well aware of it. And they don't know not to expend one penny of our money on people that are newer arrivals. Period. End of story. Sound insensitive? You bet. But it's not. It's sensitive typically to the community that we live in. On the question, sort of a tongue-in-cheek comment about the Motel 6 and the check cashing store and the gas station and the strip joint. I'm not looking to buy them. My comment was if they wanted to sell them, I'd buy them. That was it. It was a flippant response. It's sort of jokingly. Let me be clear. I'm not in the market to buy those properties. To the young lady that spoke about the Hampton Inn, if the Hampton Inn were on sale, if the Hampton Inn was on the market, I assure you, wherever you are, I'm not sure where you are, but I assure you, I'd buy the Hampton Inn.
Please address me.
If I could buy the Hampton Inn, I'd buy it. It's not for sale. To the individual who spoke about the strip joint, I got to tell you, that's not what our tenants choose to do, I don't believe. And if they did, guess what? It's located in the community. Law-abiding citizens go to strip joints every day? And I doubt my senior citizens are going to be doing pole dances anytime soon. On the question, on the question that that was asked about Miami Beach sending folks here, to the question, Mayor, that Vicky answered about that Southdade meeting that was held on homelessness. She talked about the woman that was the subject of a lot of complaints and a lot of commentary by mayors at those meetings. To everybody in the room, we export from the south end of the county hundreds of people, if not thousands, to places well outside of the south end of this county. The reason we need housing down here is there are people that are homeless down here or formerly homeless down here who want to rent property where their other family members are. And this is but a reasonable, sensitive alternative to that. To the woman that asked the question or made the comments about the healthcare system, I'm surprised that a nurse from Jackson Memorial would ask those questions only because of the following. The average chronic presents themselves 13 times a year to the emergency room at Jackson. Nine of those visits from the chronic on the streets result in inpatient stays of not less than seven days. Do the math, somewhere between $9,000 and $11,000 a day at Jackson Memorial. The reason we do what we do is to keep people out of the emergency rooms. The reason we do what we do is to improve the healthcare of those people we take care of. And yes, for the young lady's information, Jackson Memorial is our main provider of healthcare. We have contracts with Jackson Memorial. We make sure our primary care is handled in big ways by Jackson Memorial. And we try to make sure that Jackson Memorial gets reimbursed for that through various funding sources. As it relates to the continued question about jobs, I will repeat again, everybody will not be employed. Some are disabled and aren't employable because of that. Some are senior citizens and too old to be employable. But I repeat, those that will work will largely use the transit system to get to where they're going each and every day, which is why being inside the RTZ has significant value to us. To the woman that asked the question about, she tried to poke at us and get my attention about tiny homes. She doesn't need to do that. We're in a process of exploring a tiny home development somewhere else within the county, not in Cutler Bay. And she's mistaken about the cost of tiny homes. She mistakes because there's infrastructure costs. She mistakes what the total cost of a tiny home is and it is a six-figure amount of money, start to finish. And, and you've got code and other related issues when you start building tiny homes. I can tell you that we took a contingent from the city of Miami together with some folks from Miami-Dade County to see a 150 town home, a tiny home development in the city of Tallahassee. It started as a 50-unit tiny home development. It is now 150 units. And it is now a mixed population of workforce and formerly homeless. She's correct. We can build tiny homes and that is a part of our plan. In fact, the city of Miami has committed 50-pound homes to a property we have control over and we are looking at doing that. And if that pilot with the city of Miami works out at their expense, we will manage it for them. But if it works, we will build more because the property we're looking at has the capacity for more. But is that an alternative for today? It's not today. That's eight months, 12 months, 16 months, 18 months, 19 months. And we've got a population that we need to house now. To the individual that raised the question of subsidizing a tax burden to Cutler Bay, so not be a tax burden to Cutler Bay. At the end of the day, these are people that have to pay rent. And the question was asked again and again about how we price it and what's it going to do to the marketplace? Our rental units are not available to the rest of the public. Our rental units are supply and demand for those that are formerly homeless. And I repeat, formerly homeless. People that have been assessed, people that have been evaluated and people that are suitable for the housing. We've heard you, Mayor, you made a comment earlier as we got ready for questions. And I want to go back to it. Please do not think that I don't hear your words, Mayor. To each of you council members, please don't think that we have deaf ears here. Do we want to move forward and get to a closing as quick as we can? You bet. To the young lady in the front row that asked the question about the 60-day timeline, I went over and explained to her the 60-day timeline. 60-day timeline was a timeline provided in a resolution brought forward by Commissioner Tony Higgins that gave the mayor a 60-day timeframe to explore alternatives. Mayor, I've said it to you directly. I'm going to say it again. I said it on the record earlier. If there is a price available alternative in district date, I assure you we will evaluate it. And if it is an option that works within the confines of our budget, I assure you that we'll have more than serious look at it. And if it's an alternative that's best for you and best for us, that's an alternative we will take. I think the last question that I recall was a question related to why were we paying more than the appraised value? Here's what I can tell you. Two appraisals were done. A third review is being done because we believe based on the county's expert, not me, the county's expert who oversees appraisals and oversees the review of appraisals on anything and everything that's bought and sold in this community, believes that an error was made in the way they looked at the property as it relates specifically to the rapid transit zone. We believe when that is relooked at by a third-party independent reviewer, it will bring the purchase price down below an overall payment amount. So that question was asked twice. I wanted to make sure I readdressed it. Mayor, I think that's all of the questions. Some of those were answered within others.
One, one that you didn't address.
Yes, sir.
The ability to sell the property in the future.
We have the ability to sell the property, just like the county has the ability to dispose of any property that they have. There's a process and a procedure and it's well established, both under Florida statutes and under county code.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation. We answered a lot of questions and I, and again, the purpose of the meeting was to bring information forward. I'd like to again thank Commissioner Higgins and Mayor Kava for arranging this, giving us the time to do this. I'd like to recognize Javay, the chief of staff for Commissioner Higgins in the front row here. Thank you very much for being here. But let me just make this message very, very clear to the homeless trust, to the citizens, to our county commissioners and anybody who will listen. We recognize the mission of the homeless trust is a good one. It's a worthy cause without a doubt. I don't think anybody in this room is arguing that. Sometimes they'll argue points of it because of one, one thing and one thing only, the location. Not that it's going to bring blight, not that it's not needed, but the right place at the right time is very, very critical for the development of an area. Cutler Bay has again been an area, what I think has been neglected from the county and state perspective for many, many decades. We are finally coming into our own sunshine right now. We have been working hard for over 20 years to try to bring the type of development which will provide the, the jobs close to where we live, the lifestyles where we need to improve the lives, the property values, the livelihood of everybody around us. Working really hard. We have a one and a half billion dollar development going in there. And the opportunity to develop that area around there, not just Lakeview site, but again, the check cashing store and the, and the strip club to redevelop that new area to provide additional housing, a greater housing is something that I think is really critically important. Recognize the additional 120 units for, for the chronically homeless is very worthy. But you know, Cutler Bay has 50,000 residents almost, which are, people are cramming in the houses in the backyards and efficiencies. We have to give more housing choices. Cutler Bay is working hard to get the type of development that the chairman of the county commission wants us to do. We've been doing everything that the county wants to make sure that we are a good neighbor for the Dade County community. We're going to continue to explore like Commissioner Higgins allowed us to do the 60 days. We're going to continue to work hard to talk to our county commissioners, to talk to the homeless trust, look for other alternatives. We're going to work hard to make sure we're going to do whatever is best for Cutler Bay. So I wanted to thank all of you for showing up tonight. Thank you all of you for your questions. Mr. Book and the homeless of Vicky, thank you very much for taking the time. I know it's not easy for you this. You've suffered some slings and arrows along the way as we get rather heated. And I just want to make sure that we focus on the issue. So the town council, I think we're all in agreement, be very clear. We need to continue this dialogue. We need to find a different location if possible, and we're going to work hard to do that.
Mayor, we will continue to be available to you, to the council, to your staff 24 hours a day as we already are, seven days a week. We're happy to take whatever questions you have, whatever suggestions you have as we continue to move forward for the betterment of the community.
So our citizens can hear your voices with your county commissioners and mayor, this meeting is adjourned.